Thank you all for coming in, for joining us. The Columbian Senatorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Vancouver City Council, position one. And just for clarification, I believe this is the seat held by Jack Burckman, who is not seeking reelection, he's not running. And I should mention that there is a fifth candidate, Maureen Goldrick, who did not respond to our request, that's why she's not here today, but we certainly invited her as we do all candidates. I'm Greg Jane, the editorial page editor, and I believe you met the other members of the editorial board. Just so you know, reporter Jake Thomas is sitting in. He won't be asking questions here, but he might want to speak with you later, or contact you down the road, just so you know. And finally, we are videotaping this as we do all of our editorial board meetings, and we will post it unedited on our website for the benefit of our readers. And with that, we will get started. And why don't you take one to two minutes, introduce yourselves, give a brief background, briefly explain why you are running for this position, and then after that, we'll get into some questions about specific issues. So, and we'll start at this end with Scott.
Great. Well, I moved out here in 1985, and...
I'm sorry, we should mention your name is Scott Campbell.
Well, it is Scott Campbell.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm Scott Campbell, running for Vancouver City Council, position number one. Moved out here in 1985, never regretted one, one part of that. You know, really, it's all about giving back to the community, that's been very good to me. I, uh, I am a governmental community affairs manager for a company here locally, and they purchased a locally owned company that I worked for prior to that. I have thirty-plus years here in industrial construction and solid waste recycling management. So, why, why, why am I running? Well, I heard, I heard that Lew had retired. And I, it's just somewhere, you know, some Bahamas or something, I thought it was a safe time to do that.
You were looking.
I'm looking. Now, you know, actually really saw some, you know, some good leadership leaving the council, and, you know, I've always been about moving forward, you know? What can be done? Where are we at, and what can be done to get us to a better place? And, you know, I'm here to tell you, you know, the city of Vancouver is in a good place, just don't want us to get sidelined, want to make sure that we're still moving forward, and, uh, and making, just making sure that we're not getting sidetracked on, on issues, important issues, but maybe not as important as the others. So, with that said, I threw my hat in the ring. I have well over four hundred endorsements, two hundred endorsements within the first twenty-four hours. Everything from millennials to the greatest generation, Republicans and Democrats, and, and, uh, people with no party preference. So, I feel I'm pretty well-rounded. You know, I've, I've been very active in the community. At any given time, I'm on six different boards, nonprofit boards. I work with neighborhood associations, our business community, and, you know, the residents on the street. It's not, it's not uncommon for me to be two hours walking down the street and get into discussions, as I'm walking down the street with whoever I may meet, so. I felt it was time, again, the leadership leaving, and just being able to take part of that because of, because of all my past experience.
Great, thank you.
I'm Nicolette Herades, also running for position one. And I'm running for city council because I believe that Vancouver's local government should be made up of men and women of all community stakeholders. I am a student at WSUV, studying anthropology, because I just love interacting with people and learning about cultures, and what makes us similar and different, and bringing that all together within the community. I am also a wife and mother, my son is eight months, so, brand-new, brand-new baby. And, uh, my, my work within the community is local activism. I've been, um, working to help citizens reach out to members of government from all levels of government, and helping advise peers on uncertain housing situations in terms of how they're looking at their futures, and being an advocate when speaking to members of government, myself, for the community.
Good, thank you.
I'm David Roberts, I'm also running for position number one. I have been a member of, a citizen of Clark County for about twenty years. I was in battleground for about twelve years, and now I've been in the city of Vancouver for five years. I've been involved in the local arts pretty much for about fifteen years, and I am involved with Magenta Theatre, I've been on their board in the past, and I'm still a volunteer. I run their website and their box office. I'm a real estate photographer, has a main, main trade, so I'm quite familiar with the current housing situation, as I take photos and see the houses disappear, pretty much right afterwards. And I'm also, I do have a small business. I run a, a toy business, and, as I said, I'm pretty much just a non-reptile. I've done many, many things throughout my life. I've been, done stand-in work for the local television programs over in Portland, so I've got to know quite a few different people, and I've learned from being on several nonprofit boards how to interact with people, so that being a small businessman and having that experience, I think is something that will be useful to council, and I'd like to see the arts also better represented on the council. As far as why I wanted to run, the current political climate has been something that really concerned me over the last few years, and now just recently even worse. I, I just feel that seems like sometimes the wrong people are running for office, and they're being controlled by money and special interests, and it's one of the reasons I have not taken any endorsements. I am pretty much consider myself, I've gotten all kinds of requests for interviews with all various places, I just, I want to represent everybody, I want to represent people based on what I think is best for the city in general. Hopefully that falls in line with all of the people's interests, whether the real estate, whether it's a real estate board, or the housing board, or whoever happens to be interested, I, I want to make sure that it works for everybody, so I'm trying to be that every man candidate that will hopefully resonate with people, and make them feel like they're being represented. And since I'm a small businessman, I really want to work in the city on improving our relationship with small businesses, and helping them grow, so, because I think that's where all the jobs can come from, and that will help bring local incomes up with small business, so. That's why I'm running.
Thank you.
Is there a timer, or?
Uh, no.
Okay, just want to make sure. My name is Jay McCarver, running for McCarver State Council, position one. And I agree with what anybody here has said, we need to make sure that we're not sidelined by false issues, and basically we need to make sure we have a small business environment for our community. He owns a small business, that's great, we need more small businesses. Ninety percent of our businesses are small businesses, we make sure that we have an environment that works for them, make sure it's a stable environment, not just a good tax system, but it's not stable for them as well, because obviously businesses want stability. If the laws are always changing, then there's uncertainty in business, that's a very bad thing. So we need to make sure there's certainty that we are a small business factory. So if you want to have a small business, if you know somebody wants a small business, then we need to make sure that we make it easier for you to start a small business, make the tax code simple, make it sort of stable. And we need evidence-based solutions for small businesses, obviously, housing, infrastructure. We need to make sure there's evidence-based solutions for what we're doing. Twenty-first century, it's different than the twentieth century, we need different policies, different mindsets, different way of going forward to solving our challenges, whether it's housing, infrastructure across the river, infrastructure in the city, small business, education, everything, we need new solutions for our challenges. And actually, you say not taking any money from anybody, or not endorsements from anybody, my bad, sorry. So pretty much, you obviously need money for...
I will take contributions.
Okay. I've been endorsements, but, from which I, basically, that whole mindset of basically you're, basically, there's a lot of people talking about their rigged system, the corrupt system, whether it's Bernie or Trump, a lot of people are talking about a corrupt system, a local or national establishment, and definitely there's a lot of voters on both sides yow, and in the middle are concerned about, you know, local big money, potentially going into politics, local special interests, there's a lot of fishy things happened at the CRC a couple of years ago. So definitely we make sure whatever we do, there's a clean process that's evidence-based. And that's why we're actually, I feel so passionate about that, I actually made a pledge, a three-point pledge. So if I'm elected, I only serve two terms maximum city council. I'll vote no on any tax increases on small businesses, and I'll vote no on any law that funds or approves light rail. Is there a copy, if you guys want a copy?
Sure.
Of my pledge, that's what I'm making for office, is basically that three-point pledge, I only serve two-term limits, max if elected, I'll vote no on any small business tax increase, and anything that funds or approves light rail, I'll vote against. That's kind of the heart of my platform, pretty much. In fact, I'm so passionate that I made a three-point pledge, so that's kind of the foundation of why I'm running for office.
Okay, well, thank you to all of you. We'll move on to specific issues now, and one of the biggest issues facing Vancouver is affordable housing and homelessness. And the voters passed Proposition One last November to raise an expected $6 million a year over a seven-year period to deal with affordable housing. How should that money be spent? We'll start at this end, Greg.
So currently, sixty-seven percent spent on seventy-nine families for their homes, buildings, building new structures. Twenty-five percent spent on, it's just like fifty-hundred families, they're just spending on implementing costs, other costs as well, shelters. I think that's a good formula, but we should also make sure that there's a database that works. Homelessness went up eighteen percent, and obviously if it's going eighteen percent, something's not working. And we should basically base our model off of what other states have done that work. Houston, for example, reduced their unsheltered homeless population by seventy-five percent between 2011 and 2016 by investing in a better database, and by providing rental assistance. So I keep the composition mostly the same, except I take chunks off here and there to fund the, basically, a better database. So if you're homeless, you probably don't know what services you provide, are provided for you that you actually need. So if you go to the government for, hey, I'm homeless, I'm low-income, I need help, you have a database that basically tracks all the organizations and says, hey, here's what you need, here's where you go for your assistance, for your services. So invested that sort of evidence-based solution is what I would also focus on with the problem of money as well, is evidence-based solutions, like what happened in Houston, it was a miracle what happened in Houston, so.
And now, part of Houston, you're right, it was the organization and their database that they put together. But they also greatly, in Houston, they have no boundaries essentially for building, and they build a lot more housing. Would you favor expanding the growth boundary to deal with affordable housing? How much sprawl should we have?
That's an excellent question. Obviously sprawl has some perceived downfall, so obviously if you're expanding rapidly, there's issues with how you create police, fire, sewer. But definitely we work with the county as a partner, and other cities as partners, what, hey, how do we, where do we build more houses at? What actually, where are we allowed to build houses at? Because Vancouver is very, kind of very built-in for the most part, so you'd have to expand to unincorporated Vancouver, longer-term cities as well. You'd have to work with other partners that can maybe work together to find places where we could put more housing, more low-income housing, middle-income housing, where are we going to put these structures at? So you have to work with the county, and you have to obviously play nice. Obviously, you know, the past five, ten years, there's been a bad relationship to some extent with the county and the cities, so you'd have to work together about what they value, what you value, and work on common ground solutions.
Great, thank you. And, David, thoughts, how should the money be spent?
Um, I was, the Proposition One funds allocated like the way he said they were. My only concern is there's only about five percent of the funds being used to help people in emergency situations, and trying to, to me, help the most vulnerable part of our society. I don't think we can solve the, the housing crisis for people who are homeless due to circumstances not involving, you know, being priced out of the market. There's a lot of those people who need to be helped and moved into either nonprofit help like SHARE, or, or city VHA, the Housing Authorities Buildings. I think we need to spend a little bit more money on getting people out of the homeless situation into what's already available. And I think, you know, especially when we're talking about some of the most recent housing, about eighteen percent of people are homeless, I think a lot of that is becoming from the fact that rents are growing at such a large rate that a lot of people are losing, you know, being evicted, losing the ability to pay. But I think that problem will take care of itself just based on market. You know, there are so many apartments coming online right now. I think, like, everything happens, as soon as there is a, there's a need for something, all of a sudden, everybody starts building, everybody starts doing this, because that's where the money is, but then as soon as you overproduce, I think you'll find that rates or, uh, market rents will come down for at least people who are on that edge. But I think more money from the Prop One needs to go help the vulnerable people, because, you know, giving out vouchers and things like that, I mean, that helps temporarily, and it helps, like I say, keep rents artificially low, but I think the rents will drop within the next two years with more, more apartments and things coming online. So that would be, I kind of would be more interested in reallocating that, I don't know if that's possible, but I, I believe, at least by next year, it's already allocated for this year, that we could at least adjust that and make that a little more balanced to actually help solve the homeless problem, not just take care of a temporary, uh, housing crisis.
Thank you. Nicolette?
I, I would like to see that money be allocated towards, uh, projects such as the tiny homes that have been proposed by the Community Roots Collaborative, that really focuses on a sense of community within that plot of land, where there would be a certain number of houses on the plot, and then a community center in the middle, that would also include gardening and, and things like that to help bring everybody together. Or other, if that is, uh, for some reason not an option, then other low-income housing, apartments, I think it would be a good way of handling that. Uh, and in terms of places to, to put these plots, would, I would look toward developed properties that are not as, that are not in use, but have access to electricity, gas, depending on where in the city we are, and the like, so that we don't have to start from scratch on undeveloped land out in the outer rims of the city. And it would also be closer to the amenities that people would need access to, and if they don't have transportation, they would be more likely to be near a bus stop.
Great, and thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Proposition One, you know, was a good start. I supported it. Um, you know, the, the way it's allocated out, um, is fine. Probably the one thing I'd really like to see come from it is, it was, is with great oversight, is people that are on, on the verge of becoming homeless, for whatever reason, and usually it's the, it's the high, high cost of, of the rental, rental markets here. I'd, I'd really like to see, let's help them before they become homeless. The second part of that is, we have got some great nonprofit agencies, we've got some governmental agencies, we've got numerous, um, people looking at this. And they're like, all in their each little silo, you know, doing their own thing. I really believe that we can get this homeless situation under control, if we could just get those people to sit at a table much like this one, and, you know, come, talk about their ideas and what can work. Because, quite honestly, one doesn't need to look too far. Whatever's happening is not working. Whether you're talking downtown, or whether you're talking the east, east side, it's, there's no jurisdictional boundaries, this isn't a city of Vancouver problem, it's a Clark County issue as well. And, uh, we need, we need to sit down together and, and work on it, and really work on it. Let's solve the issue, there's ways to do that. We don't have to, um, we can even involve what's going on over in the metro area, and what has worked elsewhere, review that, see if, what were their pitfalls, what'd they go through? And then, in turn, bring that information down here. Okay, would it work for us? How would we have to modify it to make it work? But again, you know, I get back to people in their own agencies doing very good work, but they're all not working together. And until they, and until they do, it's not, it's not going to happen.
Uh, this is a nonpartisan race, as we all know, but, so that voters might be able to get a sense of where you guys are at politically, I'll start with Scott. Could you tell me who you voted for president?
No, I won't tell you who I voted for president.
Really?
Yeah, this is a nonpartisan race, as you, as you said.
Right, but, would, did you tell me who you voted for president?
I would say in terms of my leanings, I am incredibly progressive.
Okay, but you won't say who you voted for president?
It is, it is a nonpartisan race, I, I would rather not, but I am...
You know... David, you got, you got a, I'm over two right now, but, I'm hopeful.
Well, can I just interject and expand a little bit? This is all about for the citizens of the city of Vancouver, and this, and we need to do good work for them.
I agree. Right, here, here's the thing, though, this, this isn't about really who you voted for president, it's about where you lean conservatively, or, or liberally, and I think who you voted for president will help to answer that question. I get that, you know, this isn't a national issue, and it's not a partisan race, but I'm interested to see if somebody's willing to say who they voted for president.
Well, let me, let me expand on that. I, I think when you talk about a local race, my voting record will show that I've voted for the best individual for the position, in regard to...
Who was that for president?
In regard to the, whether it's an already...
Who was that for president?
I, this, I'm talking about local races.
Okay.
I'm willing to answer, I'm willing to answer that question, only because I, I voted for Hillary Clinton, I was a Bernie supporter, I, but I did believe that he had some of the best options, but his, some of his views were a little bit, you know, it was pretty much giving money to everybody for every possible, you know, if there's a problem, that's, we're going to have this fund for that. So I didn't really agree with that, that general way he went about things, but I thought the, the thinking was right, so that's why I thought Hillary Clinton was the best person. I, Donald Trump, as far as I was concerned, just was not qualified to be president.
Okay. From Jacob?
I didn't strongly support either one, so...
Did you vote?
Yes.
So who'd you vote for?
He was a copy and paste, Scott Campbell's response, copy and paste.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, um, how do you prioritize the, uh, city services, the, uh, there's a lot of requested services like, uh, street maintenance, and maintenance of medians, and parks, so, and the city has struggled to fund those as they have tried to devote more and more money to, uh, law enforcement and fire services. How do you, how would you rate the different priorities for the city and, and, uh, try to meet the demands of the citizens?
Sorry, with me?
Okay.
Perfect. Well, and, you know, great question. You know, you know, we're in one of the fastest-growing cities, cities in Washington State, so we're going to have some growth issues. Funding, you know, I believe the current citizens here, and the ones that are moving here, have the right to feel that they're safe and secure. So we need to provide adequate funding for police, fire, and emergency services. We can, we can do that with, with some different options we're looking at, that the current city council is looking at. That would probably be my number-one thing in regards to that.
Do, do you mean like, are you talking about the EMS levy, or, uh...
No, it's the square footage, you know, on, that's for the buildings, that if, obviously a larger building that houses more people would, would spend more money. And that's, that's very much what not only funds a certain portion of our, of our fire, all the safety, it also helps with transportation as well.
I believe that funding for our emergency services is also incredibly important, and those are, I think, very good ways of looking at it through the housing, or through the buildings.
What percentage of the city, uh, uh, general fund budget is spent on police and fire services right now?
I do not know off the top of my head.
So, David, what's your...
Oh, could I, could I step back, because I don't think I answered part of your question?
Okay.
Um, I think it, I think it comes back down to, you know, budgeting, and not budgeting for the biennial, but budgeting many years out.
Okay.
Because we shouldn't have to go through this every two years. We shouldn't, we should, we should just keep moving forward on our budgeting. And I, and I think you're seeing certain parts of that happening now. Again, I have over thirty years of, of budgets, working on strategic plans. You know, we don't, we don't look at it, uh, in, in my business, we're not, yes, we have an annual budget, but we're looking five, ten years down the road, what, what's happening with us. And, uh, that's helped greatly, because, again, we may be talking capital projects in, in my personal work, but it would be the same, just sitting on city council, going, you know, let's not have this fight every two years, let's, let's move it out, let's keep moving it forward.
Okay, but, uh, so how do you prioritize, though? So the police chief says, I need ten more officers, and you've got, uh, six calls that month saying, how come the, uh, park is all, uh, brown and they don't water their grass?
Yeah, well, you know, um...
My kid can't play in the ball field.
And again, a good question, you know, I mean, I, I, I've had those discussions. Why, why are the parks in disarray? Why, why is the, the equipment in the parks, why isn't it up to speed? That's a tough one, because it's equality of life. I mean, I sit on the, the Parks Foundation, who, who gives money annually, and we help greatly, so, uh, that's a huge support mechanism for that. But if you looked at, should one be higher than the other, I would, I would always go with, uh, with safety. Securing the funding for police, fire, and emergency services.
I'm sorry, we were going to get, David, your thoughts on...
Sure. Now, I was going to, you're, now you're talking about emergency services, or you're talking about, uh, public work services in your question? Are you just saying it prioritizing as far as...
Uh, so, these would be, uh, things that come from the general fund, not like, not like the street fund, or the sewer fund, but...
Right.
Uh, so, um, police and fire, uh...
They're fifty percent of the budget, and then...
Uh-huh. And then, uh, so, and then how do you prioritize the needs? So, we get a lot of questions here at the Columbian about, how come the city doesn't water the parks, or how come there's so many needs when you drive around real plain in the median?
Okay.
So the city doesn't do anything?
Right, okay, I see what you're saying. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think the, the key thing is, obviously, the city is meant to, to provide the basic services that everybody can't provide for themselves, like fire and police, like we were talking about, that's fifty percent of the budget, I think public works is like twenty-four percent, or somewhere right around there. So, I mean, that includes streets, you know, and that includes pretty much the whole, the rest of it, and then everything else is broken down into really...
How do you know that?
Well, it's just really small. I, I've been to city council meetings, and the, the thing that, that bothers me sometimes is, it seems like, in a way, it's the priorities, it's, it's, the people will spend money on a particular thing, and they won't think about how that affects what they weren't spending money on. And how I explain that is like, like the, the piece of land they just bought, you know, for five million dollars that they're looking at for redevelopment, the Tower Mall, or whatever it was, and, and, I mean, I'm sure that's a great investment, it might be something great that can turn into a waterfront project at some point, but at the moment, we're still recovering from like the two thousand eight recession, and it seems like priorities should be towards restoring our parks, which, I mean, and all the medians, if you drive along any of the streets, I mean, all of us who have put out campaign signs and things, notice our signs are almost shorter than the grass, so, as in, I think it's something that we need to be looking at when we look at buying something like that, which I'm also, I have a question as to, when they talk about that was being bought with general funds, I'm not on the city council, I've not specifically looked at where the funding stands, but that was bought with extra money that came in from last year's budget. I was curious as to how much extra money, you know, did come in from last year, you know, as in, that's a real issue when it comes to how much we tax people, and where we spend our money. So I think, I think we could prioritize, because we've already got, they've already got the fire and city, uh, fire and, uh, police, uh, they've extended the amount of people on the police department, I haven't seen much going on with the fire department, but I, I think we can still throw the parks up there, a little higher priority to actually maintain something that we have, without causing any kind of a great distress in our budget, even if it comes out of our general fund. I think we need to get things back up to a level that is, is comparable to what the people expect, so.
Okay.
Can we say the question?
Correct. And so, it was, it's gone kind of a, uh, through, through the generations.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to make sure that...
...about how you, uh, prioritize the different needs of the, of cities, so, um, police and fire is certainly, and public safety is certainly an important function
Yes.
city provides, but then also, uh, the citizens complain about, uh, things like lack of park maintenance, and lack of street maintenance, so, and public rights of way.
Yes.
So how do you, um, prioritize the need for guns and butter?
That's a, that's an excellent question. So, depends obviously, whatever year it fluctuates, but about seventy percent goes to police, fire, and infrastructure. So obviously, seventy percent, the fluctuation's year to year, obviously, up a few points, down a few points, but about three-quarters, you could say, goes to the, the big three, the fire, the police, the infrastructure. So obviously, those are the top three that should be prioritized, just like the federal government prioritizes interest on the debt, social care and Medicare is mandatory spending, everything else discretionary. That's kind of the way we should view those three services. Those three get priority funding, and then basically what's left over goes to the parks... That everything, obviously it's pay interest on the debt we have, obviously, but just the parks are things the city wants to do, et cetera, et cetera. And I would big believe when earmarking spending, so I think we should. Obviously, every general fund is good, but we should focus away from that more towards earmark, like this tax goes specifically to this service. Like, let's say you have a property tax, like one quarter goes to, this is an example. Like you say, one quarter goes to police, one quarter goes to fire, so you allocate things based on an earmarked way, so there's accountability. This is the, okay, this is where my money is going. Someone willing to pay taxes to support this specific service because there's an actual, there's a string attached, there's accountability. So definitely.
What happens if if Lowe's closes all its Clark County stores and you've got that money paid for police protection? Do you lay off the cops?
Oh, no, no. Basically, that's just exactly, you want some general fund revenue, but you want more and more to be earmarked. So property tax is pretty stable. You have products levy, not a rate. So it's easier to basically have that revenue there for those core services that's, there's a string attached, there's accountability there. So. I would propose more earmarked spending, more accountable spending. Cause a lot of people, I go door to door knocking on doors, a lot of people don't mind paying more taxes if there is a actual specific earmark for it. So if this is a general tax raise, most people I go door to door, most voters say, eh, depends what it's going for. They say, here's actual example of a tax going to this specific service. They're more willing to say, hey, I support this because there's actual string attached, there's accountability, there's a check and balance. So that's what the voters pretty much want. But definitely I agree that with David, that five million dollars on that mall. Eh, was that actual good spending money, especially when you have, you know, we want to have more police officers, want to find more et cetera, et cetera. Five million dollars for a buying property might not be the best decision. When we have other needs, but obviously we have police, fire and roads and parks as well, so.
Is there a shift in gears here?
Well, could I, could I just expand a little bit on that? It's all inter- oh, well, it's all interconnected.
Yes.
It's all interconnected. That's all I was gonna say.
Okay, so I I'm I'm curious to know if you believe uh that the city of Vancouver should. Include in its vision for the future an oil terminal. Would you like to start?
It's whether we want it to happen or not, it's probably gonna happen, to be honest. The state council doesn't actually determine directly. We don't have a direct, we can have an advisory vote, et cetera, et cetera, but we can't actually directly say. We we can actually stop this or not legally, except to the poor of Vancouver and the governor at this point.
But nevertheless.
Personally.
What and 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 one is a game of odds and.
Yeah.
To figure out what side to bet on, but I wanna know philosophically, when you look at the at at the consequence of that decision. Uh would you, i- if it was your decision and you could change the future? And the city of Vancouver does have an impact on this, and uh but what, just where do you sit on, sit on that?
So I also have to balance job creation with safety as well. So a plan B would be if someone, if Vancouver doesn't want it. If the Vancouver voters decide with the advisory vote, do you want this or not? The plan B would be if they say, no, we don't want this, would be how do we? Make sure there's safety, at least with the oil terminal, so there's assurance. Is there a surplus fund if something happens? So if I would suggest advisory vote for the voters, it's such a big deal that I think we should have advisory vote, whether we actually approve it or not. If the voters say no on it, then if it still happens, which I think it probably will. But we should basically make sure that there's a safety component, you know, that have insurance that's up to date, that's accountable. There's possibly surplus fund that they pay into, so there's a, there is explosion if something happens, there's money there to take care of it ahead of time.
Yeah, but how would you vote on it if you, if there was an advisory vote?
It depend on what the specifics were. So obviously what the safety standards were. So you have to look at the actual details of the contract. And I don't have the contract for me right now, so it depends what the actual standards are for the safety.
So you're 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 okay with it so long as it's uh the safety box is checked as being um somehow mitigated?
If there's a hundred percent safety chance, yes, but obviously there's. Job, balanced job creation with safety, so I'd have to look at the exact contract.
I was just saying, let's say right now, from what you know, and you were the governor, cause it will be his decision.
Yes.
What would you say?
Depends what the contract actually says. So obviously you have tax standards.
So if, do you know what's in the contract right now? As it is right now, would you say yes or no?
I've not read the whole contract, but.
What's your hunch from what you do know? Do you think you would approve it or not?
This, this, you'd have to have an advi- you'd have to have advisory vote. Cause obviously the county says before, but the city of Vancouver is. I'd look at the advisory vote and the voters, cause obviously if it's such a big decision.
How would you vote on the advisory?
Depends what the contract says.
With what you know right now?
Before I vote night right now till I got more of a safety hunch from it, I'd vote. That's a good question. I'd have to look at, I'd have to read it. I'd have to read it.
Same one.
We don't want the same answer.
I I I respect, I respect Jacob, or at least, you know, making sure that he, you know, he wants to know what, you know, kinda like what's in the contract before you. Vote on something, you know, I I definitely, but as in, to me, when he said a hundred percent safety, obviously, there's no such thing as a hundred percent safety. And when you're talking about oil trains, you're talking about major catastrophe, no way. I totally do not support that, would never support it. As in, the only thing the city council can do at this point, I'm not even sure they can do it at this point, but the only thing they have control over is the zoning. They can control where, what area of something is zoned. If I had the ability, you know, uh at the time of election. I would definitely look into that as far as zoning that or rezoning the area, so that was not even a possibility. But like I said, I just do not believe that that we need these jobs. Uh the safety of our community, the trains go right by our waterfront, which is gonna be a multi-billion dollar uh investment. I mean, it could just cause the one of the most incredible tragedies that I can imagine. I would hope it would never happen. I would hope companies would be safe, but. They've proven themselves not to be, so I could not support that ever.
I read the contract, few years ago, there was a trimester contract with a five million dollar penalty that people didn't read ahead of time. The C H N trimester contract that was twenty fourteen, right? There's a five million dollar penalty of that contract over. Obviously, some people didn't actually read the contract before they voted yes on it, so you wanna read the contract before you sign it. So to make sure there's no.
Sure, as a city councillor, of course, but we were just asking.
Yeah.
You in a non-binding commitment right now, I'm sorry. Nicolette?
Same question. Uh, no, I do not support the oil terminal at all. I. Think we need to focus on green energy in terms of the oil itself, and safety is incredibly important. If something were to happen. Getting emergency services out there would be incredibly difficult and getting them back into safety. It would be. A mess i- just in safety alone, and Vancouver. And Washington State prides itself on being green and beautiful, and we need to focus on staying green and beautiful.
Great, Scott.
Short and sweet, my answer is no. The city council has already, already voted uh no, and I would, I would support their decision.
If you were on the council previously, would you have voted no?
Correct.
Okay.
I just had one quick thing. Uh as far as the oil trains, that my question to the oil companies would be. Uh the oil seems to be moving along just fine right now. As in, so is it an issue of expanding more oil uh production? Or is it a matter of cost? I believe it's a matter of cost, but the cost is in that at our, you know, at our detriment, so.
One, one of the things that was just noted here was the city found some extra cash. And the first thing they did was they said, hey, let's spend it. And let's be honest, this is what government does. So it's a two-part question. Do you think that's what government should do? I found some money, let's spend it. And secondly, it's been wrote for the Vancouver City Council to. Approve the maximum tax that they can approve. I'm not gonna say forever, but we know as far back as we can remember, not really, maybe a decade or so. I mean, it's just automatic. What can I get? You can get one percent. Okay, give us one percent. Everybody who says yes, okay, another one percent. Do you ever envision a time where the city? Doesn't, that that you would not, that you would say no to the maximum one percent? Tax increase? So two part, one, should the city just automatically spend money when they find it? And two, do you ever see you not saying no to a one percent tax increase, Scott?
Well, you know, I. Honestly, I'd have to research that a little bit more, cause I think that one percent comes. They can't do more than one percent.
Right, that's their max.
So.
That's their max.
So.
And they hit the max.
Yeah, to me, yeah, to me. How can, how can we just have one percent when everything else is going up, our population is going up? This, the services needed is going up. It's much more than that one percent. At some point, you got deficits. Uh the second part of uh. Well, hey, we've got found money, let's go do something with it. Again, I might have to research that a little bit, you know, what was? What was the governing reasons for purchasing the the Tower Mall property? Well, how are they gonna utilize that? I'm not gonna sit here and say, no, that was a bad decision, because I don't fully understand their reasoning why.
Right, it's not a specific question about that money. It's a, it's a general question about, I found some money, let's spend it.
Here's what I'd like to do. If there was, if there was a chance of not losing that money because we didn't spend it. Then let's save that. Let's do something for a rainy day, cause we've seen it happen. We've seen it happen here in this community.
And you, but you do, you, it sounds like you do support that maximum one percent increase.
Oh, yeah.
Every, every year.
In terms of spending. I think it depends on where that money had come from originally. If it came from the community, I think it should go back into the community and. Help replenish what might be needed, that that money can really help, that the community itself may not be able to do. And in terms of the one percent increase, I would say it also depends on the the current economic situation. If we needed to raise it, if we didn't, then I'd be fine with, am I misunderstanding?
Let's assume for the sake of argument, the city can say, we always need it. They never say, I don't need it, but let's do it.
Um, right, well, I think it would need to be in a situation which we really honestly needed, and we had a conversation. We all got to the table and talked about it and came up, made a decision from there.
Okay.
I'd have to, you're the reporters, but I have to look at that. I I I thought there was a period of time uh. Not too long ago where the city did not utilize its full amount. I mean, I could, I could be.
Not recently.
Okay, maybe, maybe, I was gonna say, it's kind of difficult when you're researching a lot of numbers and things. But yeah, as in. As a city council person, I I'm a little concerned, I'd be a little concerned because, you know, we've got improving economy. So we have, we get a certain amount of money from sales tax revenue, and we get uh money, as I say, I'm a real estate photographer, we get money from increased property taxes. So it seems like those things should in general go along with the rate, you know, the the costs that that um. Come every year, things go up in price, I understand that. So I I would definitely be looking at how we allocated that money and. I would not always be in favor of that one percent. As in, if it's necessary, as in, if it's necessary to provide all the basic services that we need to do. Because we're not getting the amount of money coming in, I agree. The reason I brought up that Tower Mall was. How how much extra money all of a sudden showed up in the budget? And and that just bothers me that that. How long have they been planning on this Tower Mall? Was it something long term? They've been looking at it going, hey, this is something that we'd really like to add to our. Portfolio to connect the east and the downtown. If that's great, and the opportunity came up, then yeah, I'd do it in a heartbeat. If we had the money to do that, I would, because it's something that was a priority that they've been looking at. But I'm. Little concerned that it was more like, ooh, look, this is available, somebody told somebody, and you know, that's, that's the concern I get about. Government is sometimes people are connected with each other, and all of a sudden, an opportunity comes up and somebody talks someone into it, and all of a sudden, it becomes a council issue, so. I would be more interested in finding out if that was truly in long-term planning, or if, like you said, just. Got the money, let's go ahead and spend it, cause I work for nonprofits and I work for the Magenta Theater, and. When we have money, we save it until it comes for something that's absolutely necessary and important to running the company, not just, we got a windfall, let's. Go toss it on, building a new set.
This is part one, yes. Basically, spend money, no. You pay down the debt or surplus fund. Just because you get money, that's when you should just spend automatically. The part two, I agree with what David just said, is who does run way, depends where money is actually going. Who's the mayor that gives them another pay increase? And we probably agree on that, cause I read your stuff last year about the mayor's pay increase, but. Pretty much, where's money going? Depends where it's going. Is it going to the mayor's pay increase? Or is it going to core services? It depends where money is actually going. So I would add the pay increase on to what he said about. Depends where taxes actually go. Plus, also if sales tax, if you have a a great small business environment. Then sales tax revenue would go up, up, up more and more and more, which means probably tax will be less, less of a value, less, less of a. It'll be a smaller portion of the revenue as time goes on. Cause the state obviously caps at one percent a year, as you said. But sales tax obviously goes up and and down with the economy. So as we get a very small business environment. The longer the property tax, terms of, uh, percent of the budget goes down, 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 less, less of a need per se. So it depends where it's going. Obviously, if you have to raise it to fund just the core services, just to pay for a police officer's salary. Or firefighter's salary, then I would raise it. But if it's going to the mayor's own salary increase, I would say no.
Unless you're the mayor.
I've got a couple of specific questions for specific people, Scott. I wanna know. Uh if your way, the contract for waste management is led by the city of Vancouver, correct?
Correct, through an interlocal.
How would you handle that if you were elected to the city council?
Well, I think it, I think it'd be, it's rather simple. It'd be just like any other businessman who's sat on the city council. You just recuse yourself from any of the. Any of the conversations going on about it.
Okay, great. So anybody else have a proceed, a conflict of interest uh that you wanna talk about?
Nothing I know of.
I'm a real estate photographer, but I don't belong to any particular real estate.
Which uh which Vancouver, East Vancouver restaurant do you work?
That's Van Pizza. It's a franchise for Domino's, so.
Okay.
The Van Pizza.
Okay, great. Little easier question. Um in two sentences, can you summarize your position on the? I five bridge replacement fiasco?
To get three or four, or is it just two?
What I want you to do, I want you to pull out the process of the issue as far as your concern. You know, cause we could all talk about that project for twenty minutes.
Okay, and part, part two would be, your, what I was gonna ask is your priorities as far as transportation. So what, what are they?
So do they get two more sentences?
I'm gonna keep it short, just one more.
Haiku?
Okay, so what's the first sentence question? What's the second sentence question? So you get this, what's the?
Well, just, just, just freestyle it.
Yeah. Well, obviously, light rail, I'm against. So that's part one, that that's first sentence. Second sentence says, whether a bridge, the board approves, I also put that if it fits going ethical implementation process. That could talk more, but two sentences.
Okay, good.
I approve of replacing the old bridge, making it light rail compatible, but not interested in right rail component at the moment. And um as far as uh funding, I would wanna see a majority federal government and then the shared cost between Oregon and Washington. And if there was any toll element, I would think Washington commuters should be able to deduct it from their Oregon state taxes.
I would be in favor of light rail. I think that that would be a better, a a more efficient way of handling things. Uh in a quicker way, or something uh easier for C Trans so that the the four can get to Jansen Beach easily. People who are commuting uh through that form of transportation have the ability to.
So, Nibbet, what would be your, your top priority as far as our transportation needs here?
Fixing the bridge.
Okay, so replacing it or just fixing it?
Replacing it might be a be- a better option. I think fixing it would be the the quicker option for those who do have to sit on the bridge in traffic every day.
Replacing the bridge and looking forward to a second, probably a third crossing as well. Here, the unfortunate thing about this is. That bridge should have been, everything signed off and. Twenty years ago, cause then it would be built right, right now. If there, if we signed off on it today, we'd be fifteen years from a new bridge. And that's. That's really sorry, uh you know. Um so, and again, you know, I talked about silos. That's what, that's what messed up this last go around, is everybody thought they had the best animal in the cage, or they were working on this. If they could have actually sat down at a table and left their egos at the door, we could have gotten a lot more done. And uh it's, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate for the citizens of this community.
Although that's more than three cents.
Okay, okay, the the second part will be.
Yeah, can we answer your question?
The transportation component, to me, is by far more. There's more to it than just the I five corridor. Um we're having issues east to west. You know, whether it's getting your kids to school safely, whether it's getting goods to manufacturers, to to business owners. I mean, traffic is horrendous on the east-west corridors as well, um and and we need improvements there.
We just gotta answer the bridge question. Uh yeah, uh as far as, cause I mean, right now, I think we're like. Hundred and thirty million or something in backlog on all road transportation, just on paving, alone, creating new uh infrastructure. I mean, we've got problems with First Street uh going towards the east side. I mean, we've got problems with the first street, uh, going towards the east side. And I think, I, unless, I would be in favor of potentially, uh, increasing the gas tax if that's something the city council has a say on or can talk with its county or state representatives. Doing that, barring that, I would also, uh, look at a transportation, uh, funding thing brought before the voters, much like the prop one. Give them the option, you know, if it's something that's important to them, then I think that one specifically shouldn't just be a city council decided since it affects everyone, so critically.
So, I, I'd invest infrastructure on this side of the river until there's more, cause obviously cross-river communication is more state legislature position. So on state councils, only so much you can actually do with Portland and Mollama County. So I'll focus on investing infrastructure on this side of the river, cause obviously the long-term solution to traffic is to bring jobs over here. Obviously, we can try folks on I five or third bridge or fourth bridge, but the immediate solution is to bring jobs back over here, which I invest infrastructure on this side, where it's, you know, first street, as you said, Mill Plain, fourth plain, there's a lot of trucks on fourth plain that should be on Mill Plain instead. But obviously, I'd invest infrastructure on this side of the river, prioritize that.
Great, thanks.
Great, uh, did you want to add anything? Okay, um, uh, let's move on then, give us your final pitch, why voters should support you and, uh, mention any endorsements if you've sought them and, eh, any specific particular endorsements. You know, and this time we'll start down, check in.
As a conclusion, I'm gonna recur, I'm running because I feel passionately about more accountability locally. I've known a, a small business tax increase about no one. I won't be tax happy, I basically, if there's a tax increase, I would ask, where's it going to? Where's the accountability? If it makes sense for property tax, I'll vote for it, if it doesn't, I'll vote against it. But no small business tax increases, uh, I would work, work towards term limits and fixing the side commission panel, which we'd probably agree on. I also focus on basically more infrastructure on this side of the river as well, less on Portland and more on how we're gonna improve our job situation, our infrastructure, so we get jobs over here, living wage jobs that we need over on this side of the river. That's what I would focus on.
Thank you.
Um, well, I, as far as I'm concerned, I, I consider myself a, a social end of it, a socially liberal and physically conservative. So I kinda go on both sides of that issue. I, I wouldn't call myself a moderate, because I, I do, I consider myself, uh, more, more on a, a, a liberal side of it. But I also believe, being a small business owner, that I can bring to the table, you know, common sense type things on, like we talked about spending, you know? I, I'm not against spending if it's something that needs to be done to, to help the overall city, but also I wanna make sure that we aren't spending in other areas that could be allocated to fixing the problems we have. So that would be, uh, a priority of mine to look at the budget and just make sure that that, uh, all seemed to jive with, uh, the city's priorities. And being a small business owner, I really wanna help small, what we call micro businesses, you know, mom and pop type businesses grow. You know, if ad employees fill in the downtown with more, more, more businesses that aren't just your basic, uh, uh, chains and, and things that you just see pop up everywhere, I want, I want our city to be unique. And I'm also a supporter of the arts, so I think that'll be a priority of mine to see the economic benefits of improving our, uh, arts culture in Vancouver.
Thank you, Nicolette?
I am running because I believe that everybody within our community should have a place at the table and that we should all have our voices be heard. And I would like to be an advocate for those people who, who feel like they are not being heard and ensuring that we can all come together in the end. And I have been endorsed by the Washington chapter of the Women's Political Caucus, which is very exciting. And, uh, yeah.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Yeah, um, my endorsements range from many, but I would tell you that the fire, firefighters have endorsed me. Um, um, I have numerous endorsements from community leaders, business owners, um, small business, um, the average citizens in Clark County and the city of Vancouver who have, who have known me for through my thirty years of, of business and, and working with nonprofits here. Um, I do have the business background, I do know how the, the city govern, city government works. And, uh, I would, I am closing, I would like to, to thank the Columbian whose, uh, job is never easy, I don't believe, um, you're gonna, you're gonna upset somebody somewhere. And, and you know what, I don't see that too far different from the council, not everybody's gonna agree with me. So, um, you know, again, I appreciate you taking the time, this is a, you know, this is, this is important and we wanna get the right people in the right positions, and, and I'm an individual.
Well, thank you, thanks to all of you for coming in, thank you for your time.